You hear me up there? Very good. Well, it is now five fifteen and we can get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November twenty twenty-three zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone, state their name and address for the record, and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. After that's done, the floor will be open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once, once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted. For those applicants who wish not to stay through the deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decision. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have all five members present constituting a quorum. Bear with me, I'm allergic or something. The one thing I know it's not is anything contagious. I will call the roll now. Ms. Resniti, Mr. Matzo.
Present.
Ms. Bucci, Mr. Landers, and Mr. Donovan is present. I saw, thank you very much for the minutes posting them for us. Did everybody, everybody get a chance to take a look at those?
Yes.
Yeah, I did. I printed them. I looked at them and I left them in the office. Anybody have any changes or corrections for the minutes?
That was for the July meeting, correct?
It's been a while.
Yes, it has. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July twenty twenty-three.
Can I get a second, please? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And when it gets four, four and one of state. All right, we are now up to our first and only case of the evening. And we are a few minutes early. Is it okay to have the applicant into the?
Yeah, as long as you don't open the public hearing until five twenty.
Okay. So we got one case on the, on the agenda for tonight. Kit Vai, ten Brookfield Road. If you could come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. It's an area variance to pave fourteen hundred ten square feet parking area in the rear yard, resulting in approximately fifty-one percent lot coverage where the maximum is forty percent in the R one residential single unit dwelling district.
Is the speaker on? You might have to turn it off.
Okay, now it's good. Yep. Hi, my name is Kit Vee and I'm here for the ZBA zoning board application for ten Brooksville.
Okay.
And I do have some little PowerPoint presentation I did print out. Maybe, you know, we could pass it around if that would maybe have introduced myself and my case a little bit.
Okay, very good.
So I only make five copies, so I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Thank you, Tito.
If you have it electronically, you could probably send it to Tito or someone.
I do have the electronic actually.
Okay, then we can make sure it's part of the full information for the case.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, I guess this is my first time doing this, so I guess I will get started on our first page. So I'm just a little bit of self-introduction. This is my first home and my name is Kit Vee. I'm twenty-seven years old. So I work at, you know, being in general hospital and before piracy this, I did not know that there is a such thing as, you know, a lot coverage for the zoning board. So that's why I went ahead and contract the contractor to have a little bit of stuff done before. So that's why I, you know, then do this whole process and I just went ahead and started it. Um, a little bit my, about my household, my parents lived with me and one brother. And also it consists of three vehicles. And then I did, obviously, the area I'm seeking to pave, it's approximately ten percent more of the lot that I'm allowed to, which is make it like in the things I approximately fifty percent or fifty-one percent of the area lot will be covered with the proposed project. We turn to our next page. Why did I seek to pave the yard? So to the right of the, I do have a little attachment on my, what is it called? When you have inspection of the house before I purchased the house, this house had negative slope grading. So the backyard is actually higher than the house. So while it would actually just drain toward the house and I do have like a puddles sometime in my basement. So that's why I think, you know, hey, might as well pave the backyard and fix the grading a little bit. It's basically two birds in one stone. That's why I wanted to pave the yard. And then we go to the next page, applying the forty percent large coverage. I have a copies of the Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. All right. So on the page, applying the forty percent large coverage, I do have a little bit of an overhead view from a survey of the lots. Let's see, after the forty percent coverage, I would have about six hundred and seventy percent, no, six hundred and seventy square feet of the lot available to pave. And I did a little bit of quick map here, not really like a, anything. So we can see that there are three little square toward the middle bottom of the thing. That's a eighty, eighty-five and approximately eighty feet. So if I take my six hundred and seventy square feet of available space to use, minus the random three eighties, I would only have four hundred and twenty-five feet left to use. And then I also did the one I'm proposing to pave, which is like I would still need about, what is it here? I'm sorry. Let me, I gotta make that for a second. Okay, sorry. We can turn to the next page with the proposed project. It should be in the bottom. So if we add up the three random eighty square block, we would have eighty plus eighty plus eighty-five. So I would have one hundred and forty-five square feet used. And if I use my six hundred and seventy square feet available, minus that two hundreds, I only have four hundred and twenty-five square feet to use, which is not, in my opinion, I don't think that's be enough to park. So again, I'm sorry, mom, little math here. We use the twelve eighteen minus the four hundred and twenty-five square feet I would have, which would leave me with seven hundred and ninety-three square feet that I would still need if I went ahead and paved this up to the fifty-one percent. And then we can flip to the next page title, minimal parking dimension. So this is, I took this source off the internet. It's a standard parking space dimension typically range from eight point five to nine feet wide and eighteen to twenty-five four feet long. So let's assume that I have three car. So the width would be, you know, nine times three, which is the minimum lot should be twenty-seven feet. And then the length, if we take twenty-four feet, so we take twenty-seven width times twenty-four length, which would give us six hundred and forty-eight square feet. I don't know if any of those make sense or, but this is what I already did my little, little bit of a research on. So let's see, so if we take the twelve eighteen minus the minimum dimension square feet, which is like six hundred and forty-eight. I don't know. Okay, I'm sorry. Let me gather my thought again. So what I'm proposing is that, what I'm saying is that my proposed project minus my allowable footage would give me seven hundred and ninety-three square feet that I need. But if we look at the minimum parking dimension, if I'm online, it would say that, you know, ideal parking would be six hundred and forty-eight square feet. So that's why I'm asking for the ten percent extension. I don't know if this really makes sense or I explained it really badly.
I think I'm following what you're, what you're talking about.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So in summary, I think that paving my backyard should not bring any undesirable changes to the character of the neighborhood or it would make any detrimental to any nearby property since this area will only be used or paved and then this would be in the back of my house and it shouldn't be any eyes or since because pretty much everything is fenced in. So I feel like it shouldn't impact the neighborhood too much. And then again, paving it should not be any detriment to the health or safety of the neighborhood either, since normally uses for parking and nothing else. And then I think, you know, having removed three cars from the street should give more room for public service such as no removal or garbage or environmental service or will not cause any, you know, clutter street or anything. So I think that is the end of my little PowerPoint here.
Okay. Thank you very much for preparing that for us. I believe we probably will have some questions for you. I'll start off with questions and you guys can chime in afterwards. The garage that's there, is there a plan to use that currently?
The garage is there. Right now, there would be no plan to use it for anything.
What are you, what are you doing with the garage?
I think we'll put maybe, maybe a little small, like personal, like wood shop or something, like for hobbies.
Okay. Any members of the board have questions?
Hi there.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My first question for you is, how long have you owned the property?
I purchased this property since August twenty-five this year.
Okay. Do your elderly parents drive?
Yes, they drive and they still work.
Okay. Can you currently fit all three of your vehicles in the driveway?
No, I don't think so.
In a line?
In a line. We haven't tried.
Okay. So if you haven't tried, why do you need more parking?
Um, I think because the driveway is really narrow, so it's really hard to reverse a car out. So that's why.
Okay. Thank you.
To Tito, are there any outstanding violations, zoning violations on this property currently?
Not to my knowledge, I can double check. This did come about from, from the zoning officers inspection of the site, but there are no formal citations as of right now. Is that right?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I have, how many feet could you guesstimate your driveway is currently?
Okay, currently, I guesstimate it should be around a hundred feet long and about nine feet wide.
Right, how many feet long?
Okay, give me one second. Yeah, I think it's about, so let's see, about a hundred feet long and nine wide.
But I mean, I, I'm going to be honest with you. I went there this afternoon and you could park easily five SUVs in that driveway. It might be tight if you want to open all the doors, but there's plenty of rooms. And so my next question would be, do you have any intention of parking anything other than vehicles into this new parking, like specifically a boat? RV type of vehicle, anything other than cars?
No, no intention of parking anything other than car.
Okay. But, and have you tried to park all three cars in the driveway?
Um, we have, yes. But I think it's just, I don't know, maybe kind of hard if you park in all three car, but then each person, hey, you gotta move the car and then I gotta move my car. So that, that's make it, that's why I am doing the parking.
At least two spaces directly in front of the house, parking for on-street parking.
Yes.
Okay.
If I'm looking at this correctly, you're planning on parking three cars like this.
Yes.
Okay, have you considered? If, if you're making the change here to the patio, patio is going to be gone. Making only two spots and leaving one car in front of the garage as an alternate plan?
If that, you know.
That would reduce your total width of your pad there from twenty-seven feet down to what, eighteen, nineteen, something like that? It's, I just wondered if you'd considered something lesser, because you could stack a car in front of the garage.
Yep.
Or in the garage. And have just a carport or an area beside the garage for one or two cars rather than three all the way across the yard. Just wondered if you'd considered that.
Um, I mean, if that's what I'm getting, then we could, yeah, I could, we could consider that.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to see. It's another question. What is the parking like on the street? I couldn't tell other than during daytime hours. How is parking at night on the street in that area?
I'm parking at night. I think the neighbor over here sometime would park their car and then so let's say it's my property is here and then across the street for PS here, sometime the neighbor would park here. So I would park here, but most of the time he's also parking inside his own front yard lot. And then over here on the neighbor next door here, they don't usually really park in the street.
Do you ever have any trouble finding spots to park pretty close by?
Um, no, not right now. Not I know of.
Sure.
Looking at the drawing you have on the proposed project, there's indication that there's a brick patio. Has that already been removed?
Yes.
And so that was factored into your calculation in terms of?
Yes, that was factored in. Everything is factored in. Yep.
Okay.
And I guess I kind of have a question for Tito. The numbers that the the request for grants say fourteen hundred ten square feet and the applicant is stating twelve hundred eighteen square feet. Do you know the different reason for difference? Did you guys just measure the? Just wondering how the.
Yeah, that, that was a calculation based on the measurements that he gave when he first submitted the application.
The plans of the parking area.
Correct, yeah. I think what the numbers that he was mentioning today are what he's considering the minimum for three cars. Is that right?
Oh, I cannot test that. So on the twelve eighteen, if we, the fourteen, if we take that three eighty, add to the twelve fourteen, twelve eighteen should, should give us the fourteen ten that I give to you the other day.
Okay, so it's the, the eighty, eighty and eighty-five plus the twelve eighteen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to be clear that if you could scale it back to, to, to meet the code at forty percent, you could still park two cars back there?
Um, if we scale it back to the forty percent, that's what only give me four hundred and twenty-five. We scale it down to the forty percent. So I don't, what do you think? Four twenty-five would be okay to fit two car? So can I use my phone to make a little calculation with us?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I will note and members of board, you can probably, through your own experience, it's very common in, in Binghamton for there be to drive up to a garage with a, a single or a single and a half spot right beside it. It's very, very common. So there's a good possibility we would look favorably on something that would match what goes on elsewhere in the city.
Okay.
One more question. So it stops though with a, is it this, is it five feet from the property line? Was it, did it was that in, on this, does it meet the, the five foot from the property line? Well, the proposed concrete parking area was that, you know, I can see that it's already like built out. Does it, is it five feet from the fence? Because it's not a structure. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that because there's no structure.
That rule is for parking areas with more than four cars.
Okay.
It's typically for commercial or multi-unit.
Any other questions?
John, you look deep in thought. Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at something here. I mean, I'm looking at the opposition letter here. And she does make a few good points. Yep, Christina Smith. She makes a couple of good points here, like when they're pulling in, the headlights are going to come into their possible house or whatever. If this is allowed, would you be willing to put up a fence of some sort?
Yes, I would.
You know, it's something that's attractive that, you know, so the headlights are, when you're leaving, the premises are coming in to the premises. The headlights are facing directly into somebody else's home or it would cut down some of the noise too. So, you know, from the cars. And you know, it's, it's kind of a quality of life issue in that case. You don't want to see headlights shining in your windshield and your windows all night, coming and going.
I agree. Yes, I would be willing to put up a fence.
Yeah, the questions right now.
I have a quick question on drainage. Is drainage any part of this? Like if you paved the whole backyard, where's the runoff going?
I don't believe drainage is really considered in, seeker is not part of this type of an application. It will definitely affect runoff.
Where it's going.
And I don't think that's addressed.
Is the forty percent of fifty-one percent, is that the whole property what's covered? What is that?
Yeah, so that, that's, that's the sum of any buildings or paved areas used for driving. That sum cannot exceed forty percent of the total square footage of the lot in that zoning district.
From this layout with the backyard concrete, the house, the porch, the front concrete, it looks, me, it looks way more than fifty-one percent.
So those paved areas that are walkways and patios and things like that don't count?
Driveway count.
But that long driveway.
Driveway, yeah, parking areas and driveways do count.
Okay.
What prints of buildings?
The, the question from Ernie regarding the storm water runoff. I'm, that was one of your points is the, the sloping is going to be addressed to take it away from your house.
Right.
And probably to the sides. And then probably to the side, towards the sidewalk area, I would guess.
Yes, or the driveway.
Because the general slope is towards the road.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, well, we're done for the moment. If we have more questions, if you'd stick around, we may, we may call on you again, but thank you for your input.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Yep. All right. It is. It is. It's been so long. Bear with me. We'll, we'll get there. I would like to make note that this is a single-family residence requiring a secret type two and there is no environmental review required. Just need to open the. Okay. So. All right, at this point, I would like to open or make a motion to open this application up for public, public hearing. Can I get a second, please? To all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay. That being said, anyone present wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed variance, please step forward to the microphone. State your name and address for the record. Hi. You might need to pull that down just a little bit. Make sure the green lights on.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Christina Smith and then you've already read probably what I submitted by email. I wasn't sure if I was going to come tonight, but yeah, it. Oh, gotcha. But Kit hadn't heard my concern, so I'd like to state him out loud for him too. Number one was that the cars entering the proposed parking lot will have to turn at a right angle. And I think you've talked about that, meaning that they're going to come with their headlights right into my property. And just to give you an idea what my property is, my property is at six Brookfield, but the house faces Kendall. So my backyard goes like this and Kat's backyard is right along side of it. I actually lived at ten Brookfield for nine years, so I understand the driveway. And I, I, I understand it is a narrow driveway, but it's a long driveway and it does have a single garage and it has plenty of parking on the street. My other concern was if he's puts three cars or even four, I don't know if the four of them each have a car in the back lined up the way he proposed to get out of the, those spots and back down the driveway, they would have to reverse back into the fence by me in order to go in a forward motion down the driveway to the street. So there's that. And the fence that lies between our two properties is a very old page link, four-foot-high fence. So there is plenty of visibility from my, my backyard. And then there's just the noise of, you know, the cars coming and going, car doors and, and the exhaust and I don't know what he's going to do in the winter with snow removal. So for me, it's really a loss of privacy. I've lived between both houses for forty-four years and it's a big change for me just to now look out my window and see a parking lot basically. I know zoning ordinances are there for a reason to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood and I don't see why they would make a, allow a variance, you know, if, if they're really trying to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. It's a, it's a lovely neighborhood. And just for the value of my property and for his property, I think what he's proposing is a negative. That's basically it. Yeah. So whatever you decide.
Well, thank you for.
And I, and a, one other point, I just, Kit is a new neighbor. I've only met him once and this was brought up at our first meeting, so it's not the best way to start a relationship, but I feel like I have to object. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Okay, uh, we did get one more email that was not on Basecamp.
Okay.
And I can read that if you'd like.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention officially, John had already mentioned it, but we got a a a single page. Uh, email from. Sorry, I have the names giving Christine, uh, and uh, all the points she covered and they're all covered. Writing there, and you said you have a second.
We do.
Who was that from?
So this is from Michael and Leah McGinnis. And so I'll try to summarize. We live on Overbrook Ave and have children that attend MacArthur School, we wa- walk past this property at least twice a day with our kids. During the school year going to and from MacArthur, we have a couple of concerns. Uh, with the request, not so much with the parking, but what the owner will be doing with the property util- utilizing all that parking. The letter that we received states that the areas are one. Uh, based on this request, it appears that the owner is basically putting in a parking lot in the backyard, our concern. Is that the house will be used for something other than a primary living residence for a single person or family. Um, they go on to list some more concerns, the house is located close to a school and in a family neighborhood, we would not want the house to be treated as a rental unit. Either as temporary apartments or boarding, during the school year, there's already a high volume of traffic on this block of Brookfield. Uh, adding to this would not be ideal, granting of the variance will make it easier for the house to be used. For other than what it is zoned for. Based on public information, the owners in the healthcare profession, we're concerned that the plan for the house is to board traveling nurses. Who are in town for a couple of days slash nights a week. This is something we have heard is happening in other areas, uh, and in Binghamton. It's a concern to have a large number of people constantly in and out of the house. Especially with it being so close to the parking school, thank you for taking our concerns into consideration.
Okay, well, thank you, Tito. All right. Anything else we need to do before we get on to deliberations? Okay. Uh, any other comments before we uh, close the public hearing? And that I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on ten. Brookfield Road.
I'll second.
Thank you, John, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that moves us along to deliberations on it, an area variance, and I'll remind everybody what the criteria are. Is it an undesirable change to grant the variance? Uh, is there a reasonable alternative? Is it a substantial request? Or have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood and whether or not it was self-created? And mind you, this is talking about the uh, lot coverage fifty-one percent versus forty. So is it an undesirable change? For the uh, for the neighborhood? In itself, adding more parking is not an undesirable change. And some of the points that the applicant made about getting cars off the road. Might be valid, but it sounds like there's a lot of parking on the street anyway. So how would, how do you all feel about? The undesirability of parking area?
I would say it's undesirable, given the nature of neighborhood, yes. As you mentioned earlier, sometimes there is an extension of the driveway, um, but again, this is the entirety of the backyard, basically. And um, you know, given that there's already a longer driveway than many of the homes on the street. I I don't see it fitting the character of the neighborhood.
I agree with Bart Marina.
So relatively undesirable. Not the best of choices with the full relatively. Okay. Reasonable alternative. Is there a reasonable alternative?
I I think there is, I mean, like you suggested before, uh. Where the garages usually go maybe a car and a half. Or, you know. With something over it, I mean, I it's it's hard for me to. See the whole backyard being paved, really isn't, you're losing the green space. It just uh. I understand his water problems, but now he's going to be draining the water, is it going on to? Properties where people are walking, you're going to have ice in the wintertime, is the water going to be draining onto somebody else's property?
Oh, in that area, everything, everything points towards the river and toward, from that spot towards Brookfield, so it runs. To the front of the property and to the north.
Right.
So it it just pre- predominantly goes that way.
Okay. But uh, I mean, I don't see.
I would, I would be willing to listen to a an alternate or a reasonable um. Difference, a smaller. A a smaller request rather than fifty-one, maybe forty-five.
Me and the applicant already stated in his application that he'd be willing to drop down to. Be allowable.
I do think that would require some alternate drawings, and I would hope that uh, in those drawings. We would see something that was along the lines of a car, a car and a half wide beside with the turnaround area, so you wouldn't always be. Shining at the neighbors every time you pull in, pulling across the back lot. Isn't, is the request as stated substantial request?
I think it is, I agree, yeah.
It seems pretty good look, I mean, if you look at the pictures of the, if you go there, I didn't feel, I didn't. Feel right going into the backyard, but if you look at pictures of the uh. It looks like it's under construction. It looks like the whole backyard.
Right.
Yes, just e- even not knowing the numbers, it looks substantial. So to have an in adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. We're kind of, as John and I were talking here, and we're on, we're undetermined as to the impact on storm water. It probably does have an impact on storm water, a good one to the applicant's home, but the impact to the neighborhood, we don't know.
No, we don't.
So. And yes, I'm I believe it's self-created. I mean, with a good intent of trying to improve parking and theoretically for. Use of the folks that are in there now, but it will go forward with whoever owns this property, should we approve this?
He's allowed forty percent?
He would be allowed forty percent.
And he wants to go fifty-one?
Right.
If he went, if he's allowed to go forty percent, and he does the forty percent, he wouldn't have to come in front of the ZB.
Correct, he would just have to have uh, proper drawings into planning.
Right, send that into planning.
For the construction.
And I, I mean, if it's.
You don't need a permit for that? I mean, but.
Put to add the forty percent? You say to add, bring it up to forty percent, say it's only twenty-five percent now.
What percentage of the lot is covered now? Yeah. I think that would be important for us to know.
Yeah.
Well, the the driveway is uh, nine hundred square feet. So it's everything above that.
Right. So to know, I guess.
I can come up with a number.
We're trying to do a little math up here. But it looks like it's a sizable piece of property would be available for parking. But it also sounds from what I'm hearing from the uh, the board that I don't believe we're willing to approve this as has submitted. If I'm reading the crowd, right?
Yeah.
So we're we're doing a little thinking here, we're, if I had some hold music, I would play that, but I don't. It looks like what I'm, what I'm looking at here is, it would be. Looks like it would be about half of what he's looking for from the pad. Which would give you a turnaround, yeah, it's in a good size case.
Yeah.
So right now, it looks like. Two thousand three hundred twenty-seven square feet of coverage, which would be. About thirty-three percent covered right now.
About seven percent by the way.
And again, that's not counting the deck and the brick patio. Which are covered, they don't count, but they're in fact covered areas that would be within the footprint of what he's proposing.
He's already removed the brick patio.
They're gone.
Those are gone, yeah, he removed those.
But just for rough bigger, that's seven, seven feet percent of lot.
Um, so, so let's say. About seven percent, so.
Yeah, that's.
About me. Four hundred ninety square square feet, um. Could be paved beyond what he already has.
Which is roughly half of what he's asking for.
He's asking for fourteen-ten, so.
Well, the of the area. But he's asking this area outside.
Yeah. Okay, aside from the patio, yeah.
So. Do you guys want to vote on this now?
I think we might as well, I mean, I'm.
And then we can have some suggestions for the applicant.
So that's a big. Probably he's allowed to add four hundred ninety.
Right.
I mean, that seems more than sufficient, plus he's got the driveway. And uh.
And the garage.
Yeah, and the garage.
Wait, you could.
You should, you can park them all there then.
You could park a half a dozen cars in the garage, or in that parking lot.
Yeah.
Driveway.
Yeah, plus with the four hundred ninety square feet that he can add on to it, that's funny. And that's keeping it at his forty percent, correct?
Yep, that would be forty percent, and just to add a little more uh, context, I guess, the the uh, parking, the standard parking spaces. In our code are nine by eighteen, um, is the standard parking space size, so four hundred ninety square feet. If my math is correct, would allow twenty-seven by eighteen, which would be the. Three spots.
Okay, anybody who want?
That the four hundred eighty-six square feet is three parking spots.
Three, yep.
Yeah.
The, so there's no, there would be no drive aisles behind them.
Right.
Um, but the three vehicles themselves would. Yeah, probably.
Okay, anybody want to uh, render a motion for us to consider, based on the application we've got? The uh, the request for. A fifty-one percent lot coverage.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion not to approve the area variance to pay fourteen hundred and ten square feet. And bring that down to his, which is fifty-one percent, and bring it down to his forty percent that he's allowed. Which is an ad- an additional four hundred eighty-six square feet, if I'm not, or four hundred ninety square feet, he's allowed extra.
Well, if he gets the reporting, then he doesn't even need.
Right, then he doesn't even need a variance, so I'd like to make a motion not to approve this, just.
You got a second here, all in favor of denying the application?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Sir, what, did you hear what we were talking about? So what we're talking about is uh, maybe try- trying to come closer to the allowed lot coverage. Um, by by reconfiguring, maybe looking at two spots beside the garage and to allow yourself a little turnaround area. And do the math, see how that comes out, and then get proper permits to for the building to happen that way. Okay? But as it stands, the uh, application as stated is denied. All right, and you're going to give these guys a call tomorrow and uh, try to start working on the detail. Thank you. All right, do we have any other business to uh, attend to tonight? Anything?
Stipends will be going out soon. Try to get them before Christmas to you, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Um, I have a quick question.
Yes.
We had sent out some messages about training, and there was no follow-up on that on the board. If you guys could provide some links at the end of the year coming.
We'll send the link tomorrow.
Thank you.
And and uh. Uh, with the stipends, the claim for payments will be sent to you shortly.
And we have to send them back.
We have to get them back from you before we can send a check, so.
Right.
And I'd like to congratulate Miss Presidente. And. And congratulations on getting married.
You made it through all the uh, travails of, is Italy a place? What, you get caught up in any of the weather? I'm good. Well, I guess before we get too involved in this, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's good to see you all again.